Good evening. Welcome to the August 15th City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. Ayana, would you please call the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Adkins.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adkins, could I call on you to read the land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahobes people and their successors, the Tleilalul tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Onto the approval of the minutes from July 18th, 2023. Do we have any amendments? Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ayana, I just wanted to point out on page seven of the minutes that the discussion of the resolution indicates that there was a vote only on the amended motion, and it has me voting against that, whereas in fact, there were two votes. The first vote was on the amendment itself, which I did vote no on that, but then the second vote was on the amended resolution, which I did vote in favor of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Yes?
I also have a question for staff. There was a lot of public testimony at that meeting, the first time in many years, actually, that we've had so much. And my question is, does the staff provide a draft of the minutes to those who testified in the public to give them a chance to take a look and make sure that we've accurately reflected their comments?
I don't believe that's part of the process, but Kathy did the minutes, so we could certainly... Right? She did them? You did them?
Yeah, no, she did that.
Yeah. We can check with her if she does that.
Yeah. I would think that would be a good practice to do, particularly on a meeting like that where there was so much vote this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. The amendment, do we consider that a friendly amendment, Commissioners? Are we in agreement that that was the order of things on that day? Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to pass the meeting minutes from July 18th as amended with Commissioner Zalinski's information?
I would so move.
Second.
Ayana, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Sullivan?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Adkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to reports and comments. Commissioners, does anyone have a report to offer? Okay. I have a couple of things I want to mention. Commissioner Lark isn't able to be here today, but I did learn about something really wonderful that had to do with Commissioner Lark. There is a particular award called the Military Outstanding Volunteer Service Medal, and to qualify for it, a service member's volunteer service must be to the civilian community to include military family communities, be significant in nature and produce tangible results, reflect favorably on the Army and Department of Defense, and be of a sustainable and direct nature. And our own Commissioner Lark was awarded this Volunteer Service Medal, this Military Outstanding Volunteer Service Medal, for his work with the U.S. Army and with the Planning Commission. So I thought that was pretty cool. So congratulations to Commissioner Lark. The other thing I wanted to share, Commissioners, is I had an opportunity to meet with some folks from the Delta Neighborhood, which as we know, that's where the Park District project is going to be located. And community members had a couple of things that they wanted to communicate about how they want to see that retail space used. They are very interested in childcare services, and they are also very interested in library services. There is a high concentration of families and children in that area specifically, and so those were two things that they really wanted to communicate, they'd like to see as part of that project. So perhaps as we move forward, the city can think about ways to partner with EHA for library services or opportunities for childcare. Okay? And if there are no additional comments, we'll turn it over to Becky for staff comments.
Thank you, Chair Chatters. Commissioners, Becky McQuarrie, Long Range Planning Manager and Planning Director Stevens Watchta is out of the office, so I'm filling in for him tonight. I don't have any new topics, but I have update on old topics. We briefed the Council Built Environment Committee and also the full city council on the alternatives and your recommendations on the alternatives and the specific amendments last week. They are scheduled to have a public hearing next Wednesday, and so we will let you know the outcome of that meeting. The ADU ordinance that was passed was effective as of August 5th. That was a Saturday, so essentially Monday, August 7th, and I think we're getting some inquiries already. So we hope to keep you updated as we learn more. And I think Yorick mentioned this, next week, we will be bringing a code amendment to you for briefing regarding schools in residential zones and heights. So we were approached by the school district some time ago, and I think even back during the rethink zoning. And so we'll be bringing a proposal to you, and then the following meeting would be your... in October would be your public hearing. And I don't know, Chair Chatters, if this is the right time to talk about whether or not we can meet that first Tuesday in October. We need to have an additional meeting if possible. We've got a lot of comprehensive plan work to bring forward as well as this item, and so we're hoping we can get you for an extra meeting in October. I think it's the 5th.
Yeah, I think this is the perfect time. Commissioners, do you have the ability to just take a moment and see if that is possible for you for August 5th?
Or October 5th?
I'm sorry, October.
It's actually the 3rd.
October 3rd.
Yes.
It's Tuesday, October 3rd.
Yeah.
So we're currently scheduled for the 17th, and October 3rd would be the date.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We now have an opportunity for public comment. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comment, I will ask if anyone wants to speak. If you're participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. If you're in attendance and would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign-in sheet located on the table by the door. Do we have any folks online? I don't think we have anyone here in the gallery who's submitted a form. Do we have anyone online who'd like to comment, Ayana?
Caller with number ending in 0007, if you would like to make a comment. It works.
No comments.
Thank you. No comments.
Thank you. And so now, I'll turn it back over to Becky. We have a really interesting presentation on the Alliance for Housing Affordability, so some really excellent housing data that I think we're all looking forward to digging into. So Becky, whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you. I will introduce Chris Collier. He is the Program Manager for the Alliance for Housing Affordability, and I'm not going to talk about that because I think you're going to talk about that. So, welcome, Chris.
Okay. Oh, there we go. I did it. Okay, well, thank you all for the invitation to be here tonight. Thank you, Becky, for helping me get here. It's my pleasure, and I'll try to keep this to about 15 minutes and look forward to any questions after. So, what is the Alliance for Housing Affordability? Who am I, the Program Manager? It is an interlocal between... interlocal agreement between 15 cities, the county and the County Housing Authority, not Everett Housing Authority, listed here, including Everett, to assist its members and their communities in understanding and responding as they see fit to the housing affordability crisis. And it is a crisis, as I'm trying... I'll cover the lead in in this presentation. So my role as a Program Manager is to help you, in whatever way, be your multi-tool. Whatever you, Becky, Yorick, need and the City of Everett needs to address this issue, to understand or respond, is my job to help you with. So that's what the alliance is for. It's a shared resource between all the cities because the housing market, weirdly enough, goes between cities without any inhibition. So that makes sense. So current Everett data, just what's going on in the City of Everett since last year in 2022? This is for ownership opportunities, single-family homes, townhomes and condos. That's for the entire year. For apartment rentals, that is September to December. Your cost for a single-family home in the City of Everett was within the city limits, not by address, was $619,000. Given typical loan terms, that's about $130,000 to buy a single-family home. The median single-family home in Everett, they're half or above, half or below that figure. Townhomes and condos, more affordable, but only 287 of them sold for the entirety of 2022. One, two, and three-bedroom apartments, you can see the rents in 2022, again, September to December, and the annual required income to make it apples to apples to the ownership opportunities are listed there. And the number renting is the average renting. I do a survey three times a month of apartments.com and look at how many advertising apartments there are of what types and other details. Mobile home parks are a thing in Everett, not in all communities, so in this case, I pulled that data for you, and what is really shocking is that they were selling for $155,000. A mobile home park home, just the improvement, not including pad rent, was selling for $155,000, and only 75 sold. It only takes $31,000, $32,000 to afford it, but that's also for something that's about 40 years old on average, reaching the end of its useful life. And that's a dramatic increase from the previous year. And number... Something... I'm about to compare this to 2023, where we're at right now, but number of homes sold for less than $400,000 was 180, and only 31 of them were single-family homes. So if $400,000 is your measure of affordability, which some people have balked at and said, "Well, that's not affordable," well, that's... Unfortunately, it is in the present market. Only 31 of them were single-family. Where are we in 2023? January to May? The cost, you can see how that's changed. The price has gone down for a single-family home. The sale price has declined, but the required income has gone up. The reason for that is interest rates. Since 20... At the beginning of 2022, we were at about 2.5% interest. We're now in about the 6.5% range, and that is what is driving the required income increase. And only 233 have sold so far from January to May. So generally speaking, I see price... sales declining of all housing types as people are less able... less and less able to buy. And also, people say, "Well, where can I sell and move to? Where am I going to go?" So sales are... have been declining for at least two years now, so... And rents have increased just a smidgen. Rents, generally speaking, have stayed more or less flat for the last year that I've been surveying the data. And the number of single-family home sales below 400 has gone down, down to 15, single-family home sales. So is Everett alone experiencing this? No, but I'm going to go through the motions anyway. You know the answer to that question. In five-year groups, by what percentage did single-family home sales change by price, by jurisdiction? So you can pick your favorite jurisdiction. Of course, that's Everett, or another one that you might want to compare against. And this green bar is 2000 to 2004 year-end, and this is the percentage change in single-family home sale price, again, within the city limits. 2005 to 2009, this is the run-up to the recession. You see, since we're including 2009, prices have declined in Mill Creek and Monroe quite dramatically, such that it overcomes any kind of run-up to the bubble. So the recession gets everybody else the next five years, 2010 to 15, 2014. Recession recovery in orange, 2015 to 2019, in the last two years. So let me back up here and say, this is 15 years of price change that averages out to still a positive, but not dramatic, and then the last seven years. The reason that I go through that motion of backing up, saying that here's 15, here's seven, is to say that we can't look back to the playbook of the 2000s to say, "We have a problem. We should look back in history and learn from history to get out of this problem." Because history is what delivered us to this point, and so I encourage everyone, as we think about this, as we go into the comp plan process, that we think new and embrace new ideas, because the old ideas are why we're here in the first place. This is a very busy slide. If you'd like to quote it, this number that appeared at the top of each bar is what I would say is the net change. This is what you can quote to, you know, friends, family, coworkers. This is the net change accounting for the recession decrease in sale price that has been seen in every city. So Everett, 86%. A single-family detached home in the City of Everett is 86% more expensive today than it was 23, 22 and a half years ago, and that's after you account for inflation. And I want to stress that, as I always account for inflation whenever a dollar value is present. The City of Snohomish takes the cake at 146%, very stubbornly expensive. Bothl before interest rates were rising was yet higher at 190%, but interest rates really took the wind out of their sails, and prices have come down in Bothl dramatically. So now Snohomish has that honor. One thing that I'd like to point out is the town of Darrington, fourth in from the left, all 1,500 people of it, that the percentage change in the town of Darrington is 102%. The City of Mukeltio has only seen a price increase of 59%. Mukeltio is still more expensive, don't get me wrong, but consider the impact on the community of the town of Darrington is considerably more than a place like Mukeltio, or most other places, in fact. So this is something where you can't escape by saying, "Well, just drive until you qualify." Or you might be able to, but then, you know, that impact moves up the road, so to speak, to other communities. Is it continuing? How many homes are sold for less than $400,000? Again, cities across the bottom, in five-year groups. The City of Everett, 82% of all single-family, townhome, and condo sales were for less than $400,000 in today's value. That's 4,800 across the five-year period. Continuing, the X... or the Y-axis, excuse me, is the count, not the percentage. So here we have everything up until 2020. There's still some around, and then the last two years, two and a half years, excuse me. Everett goes from 82% of all sales down to 20. Marysville, 87 to 6, and the county has decreased from 58 to 9% of all sales are for less than $400,000. I can peek into the future, and I arbitrarily pick 400,000 because that seems like a nice middle point, which is kind of horrifying, but it's the midpoint between the two ends. I can set it to $200,000. By 2018, there are no $200,000 home sales of any kind in Snohomish County, except for a very few. So what is affordable housing? Changing gears. What is affordable housing, in your mind or in the mind of your constituents in the City of Everett? When you say affordable housing, we want to talk about affordable housing in our comp plan or in other venues, is this what people think of? Is this what people think of when they say, "Hell, no, not in my neighborhood"? No. And the pitchforks come out. Would people's minds change if affordable housing looked like this? Or these? You can probably know... tell where I'm going, because these are real pictures of affordable housing properties owned by the Housing Authority in Snohomish County. So would that change? Would people say, "Well, actually, that kind of fits into my neighborhood. That fits into my community"? Would it stand out? You know, show a collage of these pictures and say, "Pick out the affordable housing" and see how well people do. Right? It blends in, particularly with affordable housing, because the developers, by and large, are part of your community. You know, Everett Housing Authority can't just pick up stakes and go to the next town over, right? That's kind of against their charter. They want to be a part... a collaborative part of your community. Who is affordable housing for? That's the other part. It's going to look bad. The people that live there are going to be... going to be bad. It's for these people. It's your preschool teachers, your childcare workers, vet techs, school bus drivers, industrial mechanics, commercial pilots, and massage therapists, among others, who make this much as an annual median wage. This is the profession's median wage in the three-county region, Central Puget Sound, Snohomish, King, and Pierce County. If they can't afford to buy in King County, they're looking here or in Pierce County first. Then they'll look at over the mountains or elsewhere. In the Central Puget Sound, 1.2 million workers are in a job whose median, not beginning, not end, median wage is less than $80,000 a year. Well, that's a lot of money. This covers 440 different occupations. Again, this is a lot of money. No, it's not. 80% area median income for a family of two is $80,000. So I'll just let that percolate. The reason I'm pointing this all out is that the issue of affordability and needing housing affordability is more than a personal failing, a moral failing, laziness, whatever people would try to characterize that need as. We can't do that. It's more than an individual. It's 440 occupations. It's 1 million people. We are not a... there are not 1 million profoundly lazy people, that if only they picked themselves up by their bootstraps, they would be fine. It's more than that. So I don't accept at all that assertion, and I would encourage the comp plan to do the same. Status quo is another choice. This is the current status quo. Very low-income households in Snohomish County, including Everett, in 2021. The average county household size is three, so that sets our income limit in 2021 to $52,100 a year for a three-person household. That describes 76,000 households in 2021. How much assistance is available for them, asked the Housing Authority in 2022. The Everett Housing... or the Housing Authority of Snohomish County, excuse me, has 6,200 units of assistance. That's both housing choice vouchers, or Section 8, and their 4,000-unit apartment portfolio across Snohomish County. That's 8% of qualifying very low-income households that would qualify for something. Everett Housing Authority, last I asked, had 3,600 units of assistance. Other income-restricted housing not owned by either housing authority is about 14% more. And that, to the best of my knowledge, is the fullest extent of our affordable housing in Snohomish County. I know I'm missing a few pieces, like Snohomish Affordable Housing Group, a couple multifamily tax-exempt properties, but that is truly incidental to the 55,500 very low-income households that remain unassisted, that qualify for some assistance but can't get it because there simply is none. It just isn't there. The reason I say it's a choice is it is a choice. We can continue the status quo, but it has a cost. Some element of these 55,500 households, and others certainly, are deferring their health care costs, their health care needs, rather. They are waiting to do preventative health care until it becomes an emergency. That emergency costs us, if it becomes charity care. The cost of an inpatient hospital bed in Washington State is $3,800 a day in $20,19 values, according to the American Hospital Association. This is a real story from the former Verden Health Commissioner down in the hospital district in Southwest County, is people who stay in an inpatient hospital bed for 400 days because there is no safe place to discharge them to because they are homeless. They have no income. They are not going to pay whatever 3,800 times 400 is. You are, because that hospital district is part of the taxing authority in Southwest County. That charity care gets rolled into the property tax bill that everybody pays. There is a cost to the status quo that we are paying today. If you say instead, "Well, some of these people will be housed in a jail cell," we all know that has a cost as well. Right? It has a cost. So calibrating our focus, what should we focus on? Chris, are we talking all subsidy? Are we talking all market? Well, House Bill 1220 really answers that question for me and says both. It says, "Over 20,000 market rate units are needed by 2044." And clearly, I've demonstrated the need for income-restricted units as well. We have to do both, be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. By the way, less market scarcity allows the market to reach lower on the income spectrum... scale. Rule of thumb is that generally, in a normal, normally functioning market, the market can reach down as far as 60% area median income or so. That's not happening today, but that's about... that was the rule of thumb when things were a little more normal. The Upjohn Institute for Employment Research in the Midwest finds that building 100 new market rate units, regardless of price, he doesn't ever discuss price, just market rate units, leads to 45 to 70, and 79 to... 17 to 39 move-outs or move-ups from the below median quintiles of housing. That is to say, it initiates immediately, within five years, people upgrading. As people move out of wherever they are into that new market rate housing, because they can afford it, someone's going to fill that spot, and it will be an upgrade for them. And all of this happens within five years. And I'd be more than happy to send out that study, if you want to read it. Oops, I forgot to animate that slide. Oh, well. What does success look like? Success looks like rent and sales price growth slowing to allow incomes to catch up. Right now, that is not the case. It's unrealistic of us to expect that the cost of housing will come down from where it is. That's... it could be accomplished, but when we're 50,000 units of housing behind as a region right now, or two years ago, according to Puget Sound Regional Council, I don't expect that. So, Chris, are you trying to bring rents down? Like, "No, I'm trying to hold them steady. I'm trying to hold them steady so that incomes can catch up." And recognizing that landlords in development would freak out if all of a sudden their financial assumptions got broken in half because rents came down, and that's, you know, those higher rental rates are what their financing was contingent on. Okay, so given... it also gives existing systems, excuse me, more room to breathe. Right? Think of that 55,000 household line for every and any available service. It gives your employment... employment training, your job training, your school programs, all of those systems, they're more successful. It changes them from just life sustainment to life-changing, life-prospering programs. What it means in numbers is a 6% vacancy rate. That's where prices will hold steady. Above 6%, prices go down; below, they go up. We're currently below 6%. And four to five months of home sale supply. That is a healthy supply, according to Realtors, and we don't have that either. So at this level, prices will stay relatively stable. The benefits to embracing and guiding action. This slide, I remembered to animate. Is this just a giveaway? Don't we get anything back? Right? Like, "Oh, I don't want to give money away to developers. What do I get for all this?" Well, already, we have the social costs, no less hospital bed stays, right? You can discharge people and not be... have that be charity care. But setting that aside, you know, yeah, but what else? This home in the City of Snohomish last sold in 2011 for $420,000, not adjusted for inflation. This condo in Monroe sold in 2017 for $310,000. If you picked up this condominium from Monroe and put it in Snohomish, where this home stands, the property taxes for the average home taxpayer in the City of Snohomish would go down by 54 cents if you maximize the land potential. Didn't increase lot coverage, but still put as many on as you could with lot cover. Taxes go down. Development brings down your taxes, and I can show this in the math. I've worked with County Assessor Yelly to really make sure that I've got this right, that development will bring people's taxes down. So if you are tax-sensitive, or if you don't want to put your hand up, if you've heard of someone who's tax-sensitive and says, "I'm really upset about my property taxes," this will bring down your property taxes. Development will do that, because you're sharing that burden. You're sharing the tax load across more people. And by the way, part of what drives your property taxes is paying the salaries, the cost of living adjustments, for the people that provide those services: fire, police, water, sewer, and so on. A big part of their budgets is paying their staff, who can't afford to live here, and so on. So there is an immediate benefit to this. It's not something that we can say, "Well, it's just a giveaway, rah, rah, rah." There's an immediate benefit to us. That is my presentation, and I look forward to any questions, and I'm sorry if I went a little over time. I got excited.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes, very nice presentation, Chris, and your charts there are very... they tell a good story.
Thank you.
Not a good story, but a powerful story. But my question for you is, normally, when you see these big price increases over the recent five years or whatever, the private marketplace responds by producing a lot of new housing. That doesn't seem to be happening, and I'm wondering if you... your research has indicated any reasons why that's not happening?
Yes, and I'm going to give you a little anecdote to answer that. Yes, and I'm going to give you a little anecdote to answer that. Many, many years ago, I was presenting to the City Council of McHaleto, and the council member since departed of the council says, "Well, Chris, this is all very engaging and interesting, and I'd love to do more. We need more affordable housing, but gosh, we're just built out. We can't build anything more in the city of McHaleto. We're not going to build anything more in the city of McHaleto." Said, "Oh, maybe that's part of the problem, is our land use policies are constraining what can be built." And in Snohomish County, as I was just on the phone this morning or this afternoon with the planning director in Snohomish, he said it was trying to encourage development in the city of Snohomish. How do I, how do I craft the comprehensive plan to encourage this? I reflected on the fact that we are competing with what can be achieved in King County, that the labor market is not slack, that there's no, if you want to work in construction labor, there is a job for you right now. And so our projects and our policies in Snohomish County in particular are competing against what can be achieved in King County. And so as we implement policies and we find that they don't work as well, it's because King County, you can make a higher rate of return, whether in affordable housing or market-rate housing. That is something that we're actively competing against and is a huge struggle for Snohomish and Pierce Counties because of our proximity to King, that we share the same labor market, but we command different prices in both home sales and also rent. So, my answer is both, fundamentally, it's land use, that we are unable to build more, build the variety of housing that we need, that so much of our land says, "Single-family, nothing more." You can't do a duplex, you can't do this, you can't do that. It's single-family or nothing. And it's also that, on the policy side, you know, why aren't our policies more effective? It's because we're trying to compete with that King County effect, and that makes our life extra difficult. There's more to say, and I'd be happy to explore that more as we go.
Commissioner Sullivan?
When you talk about land use, is it, can you compare Snohomish County's land use to King County's? Like, are they just, have they just surpassed us and have figured it out, or?
No, they haven't surpassed us at all. In the most recent study, because Seattle has been changing things, it's a little hard to keep up and also do my job up here and, you know, not get fired, is, in 2017, the Seattle Planning Department studied the entire city of Seattle and found seventy-five percent of their residential land area, residential, not including industrial and so on, seventy-five percent was exclusively reserved for single-family detached housing in Seattle. So have they nibbled away at that number some? Yes. You know, recent action by the state legislature has really changed all that, but that's what we're dealing with, is the leftovers from that 2017 fact that Seattle was seventy-five percent single-family detached zone. At the same, in the same year, I studied every, I didn't study, I read every single land settlement of every single city in Snohomish County and found, on average, we are eighty percent single-family zoned in municipal areas, not including unincorporated county. So, we're not far behind, but we're basically, so we're basically in the same boat with Seattle. It's just that when something can be built, you can charge a lot more, you can sell it for a lot more in King County than up here.
Second question. Are there, or do you know of any other counties in the state or anywhere else that are successful with these? Okay.
Not in the country. There was a recent Times article that was looking at the results of Minneapolis's, oh, shoot, I forgot the name of it. Maybe Becky can help me with.
I don't remember the name either.
So it's Minneapolis, like Minneapolis twenty, thirty, or something. Basically, it's, it was eleven, House Bill eleven-ten, except it was three units allowed per lot. And the article did not find that they have reduced prices necessarily, but they have curbed inflation, which is a partial win in the city of Minneapolis. And it really was, the crux of the article is, you know, that action did take some of the sting out of the inflation we've experienced nationwide, but that's about as good as we get, unfortunately.
So, these are excellent ideas, but we don't actually have another county to say, "Look at that success."
No.
So everybody's in the same boat.
Yes, everyone's in the same boat. Yeah, everyone, no one is able to really successfully copy one another. Again, talking with the planning director of Snohomish, she was like, "Well, I just tried to copy this code from somewhere else, and hey, thanks Everett for writing my ADU code for me." She didn't say that. Because there are no great examples. And I think part of that is everyone's kind of refusing the gate, to use horse racing lingo, because no one really wants to be the first, because what if we're wrong? What if we do it wrong? What if this really blows up in our face? We don't really know. Where is the good example that we can point to? And there isn't one, and so everyone's kind of waiting for that first example. There's a, there's a real waiting for the follow-the-leader effect to kick in, and everyone's waiting for it. And something I keep badgering everybody about, like I am about to, is you get to be the first. And something that I was trying to, or that I'd like to explore more in, you know, subsequent conversations, is the benefits of being first. And in some of the questions that Commissioner Lark emailed me, I kind of explore that, of the benefits that the city can realize, can really take advantage of, because no one else is doing it, that there's real benefit, material benefit to current and future residents that can be realized because, you know, this is a crisis, it's looking for a solution, that it's not a giveaway. So, again, you get to be first.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, just to be clear, you're saying that there is no municipality that we can point to that has implemented this comprehensive way of evolving their land use and zoning, and that is the reason why we have not seen examples of success? Not because it has been tried and failed, but because no one has holistically applied these solutions?
Right. And any success that an individual city has realized, you know, Bellevue has been commendably taking, you know, trying to take really bold action. There was an article in the Puget Sound Business Journal a couple weeks ago about, you know, six hundred multifamily tax-exempt units going up in Everett, or, excuse, not Everett, Bellevue. You know, look at all this great stuff that Bellevue's doing. What I mentioned earlier, fifty thousand units behind, you know, fifty-five thousand households that are qualifying for assistance, those little wins that cities do realize really amount to a drop in the bucket. That's the problem, is that, you know, those little, we look around for success, but no, the problem is bigger than any of us. Everett tomorrow, you could just select all, delete your zoning code, you know, anything goes, go nuts. Everett's still a minority piece of the puzzle. You still have all of Seattle saying, "Hey, thanks for doing this so solid." And every city around, between here and Seattle, it really takes all of us. So as much as this is Everett's responsibility to grapple with, and you do have the opportunity to lead in this space as the largest city in the county, and really, people are looking to you for examples. This is something that also requires Everett to use its voice and its presence to lead in this space at Snohomish County tomorrow, at the Puget Sound Regional Council, and other, you know, pan-region, or, excuse me, regional planning bodies. It's really important that Everett does that because you can't do this alone. No city can, not even Seattle. They'd make a bigger dent, but even Seattle couldn't do this alone. So that's, that's part of why we're kind of defeated by this, is every city says, "Well, we did this thing, but it didn't really work. Did we fail?" It's like, no, just we as a region outside the city haven't done enough. And so that's what constantly defeats us.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Ballard, did I see that you had a question?
I agree fully. Thank you. Great presentation.
My pleasure.
Would love to lead this. I'd love, I guess I'd love to hear more, like, ideas. I mean, do you have a top three or four things that we could do as a planning commission that you would prioritize if you were sitting in these seats or on the council?
The top thing, so I've recently been in touch with the group that's, actually, I'm invited to, an invited speaker, participant in the Casino Road, kind of, work around Casino Road and anti-displacement. So I can only give you one thing really with that in mind, but I think it's something that might be worth noting, is, you know, don't stop development. Don't stop the architecture and the structures from changing. That can't be done because that's really preserving the problem. What you can do and what you should focus on is preserve the people. The communities we care about are not the buildings. The communities we care about are the people. And if you confront people with this and you say, "Hey, let's preserve the people, not the buildings," and they say, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa," then I would detect a hint of being disingenuous about really caring about affordable housing, right? If people, if people really, when they get to the core of themselves and the issue, and they say, "I want to protect the buildings, and I don't really..." Actually, if you say you want to protect the buildings, you really don't care about the people. I've been confronted with before eleven-ten passed, House Bill eleven-ten, before it passed, someone confronted me with, "Well, but that will lead to displacement. That will lead to displacement of homeowners." Said, "Now, wait a second. No, no, it doesn't. It doesn't have to." Because if a homeowner sells, you know, they walk away with a big bag of money, if something different or smaller is built there, they could probably buy back in. And that's my suggestion to you, is support buyback of the community to prevent displacement. If a homeowner sells their home, support them buying back into the neighborhood, support them getting right of first refusal for the unit, right? As long as more than one gets built there, that's a win, and you've preserved the people along the way. That, I think, is something really important to think about, is we should be much more focused on the people than the structures. To follow up on that or to conclude, I don't know this number forever because I wasn't prepared to share this tonight, but in the city of Snohomish, the median year that a homeowner moved in to the city of Snohomish, the oldest city in the county, can you guess the year? The median year that homeowners moved in? Twenty-eleven. Half of the city has moved in after the year twenty-eleven in the last twelve years. The structures haven't changed, the people have. And if you really worry about your neighborhood, your community, you should be terrified about that, that people are leaving. Now, new people aren't bad. I've moved recently in the last year. I think I'm a good person, but still, people are leaving. Preserving the structure only preserves that building. It just allows people to cash out when they're ready and leave. And so I'd really say to people that want to preserve that structure instead of the people, "Look at what you're giving up. And if you really care about the community, do you really? Because, you know, you're really ensuring that it changes very, very fast." Thank you for coming to my TED Talk.
Thank you, Chris. That was illuminating. Appreciate the information.
My pleasure.
Do we have any additional questions?
Just, is your, are you willing to share your card deck?
Absolutely. Becky already has it. I'll send it as a PDF because there are a couple animations that make it a little screwy, so.
Except for the last slide.
Yes, except for that one. No animations there. No work for me. I know Commissioner Lark submitted a couple of questions. Did you want me to respond to those briefly, or?
You know what? I was, I was going to ask you if you wanted to speak on any of those points, and I think you touched on it briefly when you talked about sharing the tax load across more people.
Yes.
And a lot of folks, I think, are interested in gaining a better understanding of how taxation works, so that would be helpful.
Well, that presentation's really boring, but I'd be happy to come back and give it sometime. One thing I'll add, since I already touched on that, is I ran a current example in the city of Everett. Instead of using a Snohomish to Monroe example, I looked at a home, I'm not going to name the number, but a home on McHaleto Boulevard in Everett that's currently valued, its improvement is valued at two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. The land underneath it is valued at three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. If you took two of those condos that I showed from Monroe and put them there, the average tax burden for the average taxpayer in the city of Everett would go down by eighteen cents. Well, eighteen cents, that's not anything, but that's for just two units, right? Multiply that by a couple, start doing that in a couple more places. And I found an example specifically where it is still zoned, single-family. It's still zoned under current and planned future zoning, single-family. So it's not something where, "Well, it'll change eventually," like a couple examples I found in your Silver Lake. By the way, did I mention that condo was twenty years old? It was built in the early 2000s. That number changes a lot more when it's new construction. So that's what I'll say, that's what I'll add to the tax impact, is again, if you're sensitive about property taxes, every single unit has a measurable tax impact, and add it all together, it's pretty significant. And move on to the other questions, or?
Yeah, the other questions were around transportation impact and economic impact that greater density would bring. If you, if you could speak on that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, so I prepared a couple remarks. I'm trying to synthesize and cut it down a little bit. The statistic I'll cite is eighty-six point five percent. That is the number, that is the percentage of Everett's workforce that works here every day but does not live here. Eighty-six percent of your city's workforce does not live in the city of Everett. They commute in from somewhere else, and most of them are north because it's more Thirty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven, that is the number that drive in a single occupancy vehicle every day. Of those, six thousand two hundred and four drive more than sixty minutes to get to work in the city of Everett. Six thousand two hundred people drive more than an hour each way, this is not round trip, this is each way, to get to work every day. So, if you or someone watching says, "I don't care about housing. All that I heard just now was "wark, wark, 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 wark," but I care about the environment." Congratulations, you now care about housing too. Because some portion of those sixty-two hundred people that work here probably want to live here. Not all of them, that's fine, but some of them probably don't enjoy spending a good quality hour on the road each way, assuming traffic isn't too bad. And I had a chance to spend a good ten, fifteen minutes on the way coming up here on One Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Street and Fourth, waiting for traffic. It was great. So that's the workforce that comes here to work every day. How about the people that live here and go to work somewhere else? Seventy-two percent of the city's residents that work, work somewhere else. They do not work in the city. Only one quarter of people that live in the city of Everett actually work here. That's out of about fifty thousand people. So, twenty-one thousand of them take more than thirty minutes to get to work. So twenty-one thousand of your residents every day drive more than thirty minutes to get to work, most of them going to Seattle, Bellevue, further south. And again, most of them take a single occupancy vehicle to get there. So coming in, going out, leaving, coming back, most people are driving a long, long So set aside the environmental impacts. Let's talk about the economic impacts. The opportunity for being an entrepreneur outside of your main job, if you want to, if you want to do something else. If you want to spend more time with your family, with your kids, to teach your kids outside of school, to help teachers be a teacher at home, to see them be successful. How much can you do that when you're spending an hour, two hours every day on the road? So, I don't know the number of people that want to live in the city and also work here. I also don't know the number of people that work in Seattle out of necessity but would love to work somewhere in the city of Everett. But all of this, what this tells me is it's a huge opportunity, that economic opportunity I mentioned. Think about how many of those people would love to live and work in the city of Everett and cut their commute way, way, way down. So that's both a more housing option for the workforce that is coming in. It's also a economic argument for Dan Ernesti for bringing commerce, bringing industry and jobs here. So, that's, that's what I have really to say on the economic impact, and the social impact too. Again, if you want to spend more time with your kids, that commute is really fatal.
Thank you. And I want to add one more layer to that. Kitchen table issue for a lot of families, I know it was for mine, the impact of childcare.
Yes.
I commuted to Seattle for many, many years with small children in childcare, and that extended the amount of time that they had to be in childcare tremendously.
Yep.
And that is a huge impact to families' budgets to extend that childcare time.
Here's a terrible, terrible number for you. In 2019, there were four thousand eight hundred childcare workers working in the three-county region. That number today is eighteen hundred. Part of the reason is probably because they make about forty thousand dollars a year. So, I'm full of bad numbers. Jennifer's laughing. She's had to put up with me for almost ten years.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have additional questions for Chris? We appreciate this presentation, and I'm sure the community will find it very informative.
And I'll send, I'll submit these full questions, or full answers that I've typed up to you for review, because I didn't quite do it justice, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have, we're moving on to item five A on the agenda, so we will have a presentation on the housing element in the comprehensive plan.
Can I slide over with my water?
I don't see my screen.
That's okay, yeah. Yes, I don't know how Chris keeps all those statistics in his head and can just talk to people, and it's, it's great.
See me the time my PowerPoint presentation turned off, and I did it for memory.
Yeah, I believe it. Well, tonight, I have with me my housing team members, a couple of my housing team members. I have Kimber Landry. She is the Community Development Manager. Is that correct, title? And Jennifer Gregerson. She works in governmental affairs upstairs in the mayor's office now, but she's been very involved in beginnings of AHA, and she did start work with the planning department doing housing work, but the mayor stole her, which we've probably told you that before. But, anyway, so they're going to be here to help answer questions and share some information too. I know there's some new commissioners that may not know about our federal funding programs, and, you know, this is a perfect time to be able to help get you grounded in everything that we do related to housing. Okay, so, we are going to talk about the housing element. It's one of eleven that is in the comprehensive plan. This is a mandatory element. So there are elements that, under the Growth Management Act, that are mandatory and some that are optional. Just to give you an idea, we have land use. Chris just talked about the land use is a pretty significant chapter. It involves everything, basically, and it really, it really sets forth the, the growth pattern. The transportation, that's self-explanatory. Capital facilities, that's a pretty big element too. It includes our utilities, and that's water, sewer, stormwater, and it also includes our public services such as our fire department, our police department. So you're going to be getting briefings on all of these elements moving forward, but they all do relate to one another, so we have to make sure that they're complementary and consistent with each other. And we also have three current subarea plans. Those are the central waterfront redevelopment plan. We're considering whether that's still a valid plan because we've seen the development that was planned there. There's a development agreement there, so that may not be a relevant plan anymore. There's a plan, Evergreen Way revitalization plan. That anticipated a lot of housing also, along Evergreen Way that we just haven't seen. So that, that plan may need some dusting off depending on what the growth alternative, the preferred growth alternative. And then, of course, you all remember Metro Everett. So tonight I'm going to give you some background, talk about the inputs that we're using for the periodic update. This is something, this is a term you're going to be hearing throughout my presentation, and that's adequate provisions. So we'll talk about how, what that means under state law and what we're proposing, how to structure that evaluation. There's goals, policies, and actions that we'll talk about, not specific, but generally. And then I have some questions that I have prepared for you, and then certainly we'll get questions from you. So the idea tonight would be to make sure that you feel grounded in the housing element, what it is and its purpose and what's included. We'll let you know what the update requirements are and then, and get your feedback. We understand that most of the elements will need to come back because they're pretty needy, but, so if you're going along and just thinking about what other information you need or questions that you have, and we can start to integrate that into a future presentation. So we'll start with the top planning goal in the Growth Management Act, and that is basically to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population. It talks about promoting variety of residential densities and types, and then also preserving some of that existing housing stock. I think Chris talked a little bit about preserving the affordable housing, and maybe one of the things, one of the affordable housing categories that maybe Chris didn't think about, or he thinks about it but didn't mention, was that naturally occurring affordable housing. So you might have an older housing stock that naturally is affordable to the community. I know you've seen this every time I think we've talked about the comprehensive plan, but just to make sure we all know that we need to accommodate an additional 38,000 housing units between 2044 and 2024, 20 to 2044. Right now we have capacity for about 21,000, so the difference where we've got to find new capacity is about 17,000 housing units. I'm going to talk about the affordability, those bars, the colored bars. I'm going to get more specific in later slides on that. So there's inputs from a number of places. Obviously, the Washington Administrative Code, that section at the state level, and then two years ago, the state issued some, passed HB 1220, sorry. And we, since then, we've been getting guidance out of the Department of Commerce on that legislation, and there's, you'll see it's pretty wide, wide-reaching. Vision 2050, which is the Peterstown Regional Council document that guides us, also contains a housing element, the countywide planning policies plus the growth targets. And then you most assuredly know the Rethink Housing Action Plan that the city passed. The mayor has issued, this is her second on housing directive, and she did that again this year, Housing Choices for All. And then this is a local plan even though it's federal dollars, and that's the consolidated plan, which is our five-year federal grant spending plan, and I will have Kimber come and talk about that in a few minutes. So quickly, the requirements under this element is we've got to have an inventory analysis of our, our existing and projected needs. That's been done. It's been done through the Snohomish County Tomorrow, in what you've heard us call the HO5 report, which is the Housing and Needs, Housing Characteristics and Needs Report. It has to have goals and policies and objectives, and we have to demonstrate that we have sufficient land for the housing that we need. And here's the adequate provisions for existing and projected housing needs. So we're actually going to have to demonstrate that in more detail to the state that we have, in fact, adopted adequate provisions that'll help us meet our housing needs. Vision 2040, and there are, I didn't, I did provide a handout to you. It's got the multi-county planning policy goals for housing as well as the countywide planning policies. I didn't want to put them on the slide, so those are there. But again, the range of affordable, accessible, healthy, and safe housing choices, and that everyone has fair and equal access to this house, housing. In a nutshell, the countywide planning policies also just talk about affordable housing and planning for that. We just got done talking about the jobs and housing interaction, and the countywide planning policies call for a balance between those two. It calls for incentivizing affordable housing and then developing displacement strategies, which is, that's something that's new in the state legislation 1220. We're going to actually need to, we can't say it, we've actually got to find strategies to help mitigate or eliminate displacement. And so you can see there just inter-jurisdictional or multi-jurisdictional cooperation. AHA does that as well as Snohomish County Tomorrow. And this is an important one, transit-oriented development as light rail becomes further and further north up into Snohomish County, Mountain Lake Terrace, Lynwood, Everett. It's going to give the city an opportunity to take advantage of that transportation investment. And then something that we've talked about here before, which is more ownership opportunities. So the Rethink Housing, it's, it's surprising the number of implementation measures that we've actually done. There were a number of them, like the ADU, the Housing Development Incentives Program, where we expanded the multifamily tax exemption to include a much wider range of properties. So this median term, that's kind of where we are now, where we're, those strategies that we knew we would throw into the periodic update process. So there's a number of strategies that we're looking at through that lens during this And the mayor's objective, wanting to increase the supply, and middle housing is a component or middle income housing. The increase and protect affordable housing and the displacement and gentrification issue. And then, of course, the idea of how can we sustain and increase shelter options around the city for those that are unsheltered. So 1220, believe it or not, we've already done this. We adopted code, you might remember, for the Emergency Shelter and Emergency Housing Regulations. Did that in 2022, so we're kind of ahead on that. Then I think I really did, did just cover all of these, but it's a huge list of things that we're going to have to make sure this housing element includes, and it could spill over into other elements as well. I don't expect you to read this. I just wanted to show you the list of what we need to do, but it's always nice to have a list, so. We talked about middle housing, and we're, it's nice that we are down the road with some of that work we got from the grant, and that was a middle housing grant from the state. So we've got our starting point, but that's going to be a big thing, and we intend to bring that along with this periodic update. We want to take a look in this chapter, the housing element, and see where we need to make changes. There was a gap analysis already done for both the regulations and the policy, so again, we're pretty far down the road on that, and then now it's just a matter of the local choices that, that the planning commission wants to recommend and the council to make. And I mentioned this earlier about the accessory dwelling units. We are, we are done, and surprisingly, the ordinance that was written was almost the exact same as the state law, so that brought us, that was not wasted work. So some of the other additional inputs, we're continuing to receive community feedback. We will continue, even though we have moved on to Phase Three where we're doing our environmental review. Council should hopefully make a decision for, on the alternatives that we need to study next week, but we are going to continue to engage with the community, and we would continue to ask for your help in helping get people knowledge about the project. We have other functional plans that have been updated since our comprehensive plan's been updated. So the sewer plan, I believe, has been updated, the sewer or stormwater comprehensive plan, there's a bicycle plan. So we need to make sure that those new plans are reflected in this update. Consolidated plan, which I'll have Kimber talk about, and then something that you have not seen much of, we've been involved with Sound Transit Special Project that they, the FTA funded, which was the three jurisdictions, Snohomish County, Lynwood, and Everett, have been looking at model codes, so policies, directions around transit-oriented development. The idea being that it would smooth the way for when sound transit gets to the point where they are going to be asking for permits and permitting timeline, because as you know, the shorter the timeline to get approval, the cost savings can be huge. So we've been involved in that. And then that little word collage there was the last update of the consolidated plan. We went out to the community and had them tell us, you know, what, what do you like and value about your neighborhood, and the larger the word was, the more people used it. So Kimber, I'm going to have you come up.
Okay, so the city puts out a consolidated plan every five years to guide our federal funding. We received funding directly from HUD through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and we also have an inter-local agreement with Snohomish County for home program funds. CDBG funds, the Community Development Block Grant Funds, CDBG for short, are what really drives the consolidated plan, but it's our report back to HUD and our five-year federal spending as well as how we're addressing community needs that have been identified. Of course, the previous slide, Becky showed one of our community engagement efforts with the roadmap that came up with that. We are about to kick off a new consolidated plan, public engagement effort for identifying needs. Housing always comes up, but our new needs engagement will start next March, and we usually take about six months to go out for public engagement to identify those needs. The home program, let me just touch on that real quick, is the only federal funding source that we receive that can be used for construction of new housing. So it's a very unique funding pool for that reason alone. The CDBG funds can only be used for improvement to existing housing. So it's a really good tool in the law of our public agencies, even the Everett Housing Authority or other nonprofit agencies that work in affordable housing can use it to update their buildings, but of course then we also have home to help incentivize them to actually build. There are federal requirements for maintaining those properties that do receive any of the federal funding with maintaining units for persons that are within the AMI thresholds that Chris pointed out earlier in his slide, and those AMI thresholds change annually. So real quick, the consolidated plan, the one that we currently have up is for 2020 to 2024. We are about to kick off our 2024 program year. That is the last year of the consolidated plan. We are currently in the public comment period for the needs for that. We did identify needs with the Citizen Advisory Committee. We have a Citizen Advisory Committee that helps guide all of this, but the CAC, as they're known, did just identify various priority needs for this next and last year. Housing is a big one of those. And I also am going to just put a quick plug in here to also say that we also have a little bit of municipal dollars under human needs funds, as we're really supposed to support service agencies. They can also be used sometimes though for rental assistance. The priority needs for those were identified as well. A lot of them support the mayoral directives, one of those being the housing directive that you just saw Becky put up. We are currently in the public comment period for that as well until September 11th, in case anybody would like to provide comment on that, and that's also on our website. Anyway, so continue with the consolidated plan. We're in the last year of it. One important component about the consolidated plan is that we have to do an analysis of impediments, where we identify any impediments to fair housing. The last time that we did this was in 2019, or yeah, 2019. The next time that we go out, we will actually fall under the affirmatively furthering fair housing report, or AFFH report is going to be our next effort for that, and that will pick up next summer. We'll reach out and start the procurement process to then have an external agency come, and they evaluate everything from our zoning code and how it complies with fair housing to actual cases that have been submitted to the state for any discrimination that has come up within the city as well. So it's a pretty important component that accompanies the consolidated plan in our report back to HUD. Anything else that we may need to cover for consolidated plan?
No, I'm, I'm glad you brought up the AFFH. That's the Fair Housing Act. That's a federal act, correct? And in the Housing Action Plan, there were a number of strategies in there regarding tenant protections and things like that, so you see where we cross this. You'll also see in the comprehensive plan, there's a number of policies and objectives and goals around the funding, and so that's why we have Kimber on our team to make sure we're coordinated, because needs change. Housing needs haven't changed for a long time, but yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before you go, Kimber, I just want to ask commissioners, if anyone has questions thus far, feel free to jump in. No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to talk about adequate provisions, finally. So Kimber just was talking about those income levels, so the federal funding can only benefit low to moderate income folks, so that would be 80% and below. And typically, under 50% of AMI is when subsidies might be necessary. Chris talked about that. So I just wanted to put the income levels here, so the HUD calls them extremely low income would be 0 to 30%, very low, 30 to 50, low income, 50 to 80, and then moderate income is going to be that 80 to 120. So these are the categories that are typically used by jurisdictions. It comes from HUD, and they, as Kimber mentioned, they issue new ones every year. So for 2023, the area median income So for 2023, the area median income, so 100% for, we are in the Seattle Bellevue fair market area. Fair area rental, yeah. Fair market area is $146,500 for a family of four. We get lumped in with Seattle and Bellevue, which maybe isn't fair. But nonetheless, that's been that way for a long time. So the last work that we did with Snoomish County tomorrow, we had gone through this countywide planning policies. We got our growth targets. Then the last effort was then those growth targets, how many needs do we have by income category? That's new. The state did the first bit of work on that. And then it trickled down to the Puget Sound Regional Council, or did it just go directly to counties? Yeah, thank you, Jennifer. So then we, Snoomish County got a number from the state. And then Snoomish County, the cities and the county worked together to, on a methodology to distribute those numbers. It's hard to read here, but the point is the relationship of the different categories. So greater than 120,000, you'll see there that we need 20,000, almost 20,000 housing units for that category. And that's important because of when Chris talked about moving up in the ladder and having houses available at all price points, so that the inventory is constantly being able to be used. And so you'll see again in the 100 to 120, another 6,000 or so. The 50 to 80% was less than 100 units for Everett. So we're doing at this point, and it seems counterintuitive, but we do have that, a lot of that type of housing already. And we would have more as, as you move through the ladders, if our inventory in other areas gets better. So the non-supportive housing, that's that lower category. So you're going to see that it's at the top end and at the bottom end, where Everett needs to focus its housing policy and housing work. Now I'm showing you this because it's a little bit of a complex situation to determine how, okay, what does that mean? So hopefully I'm walking this through with you that it will make sense. So we remember this. This is our residential categories, our residential scheme for the alternatives. The single-family designation, the neighborhood residential, low-rise, mid-rise, and high-rise. Because I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to match these up. So I did put the description in this next table, but we might have to come back to this. This is guidance from HUD, not HUD, this is guidance from Commerce, excuse me. So the typologies again are on the left. And then those next two columns are showing what the income levels would serve. So typically, single families would, would serve that 120 AMI, the higher income levels. So the next is the neighborhood residential, which is that middle housing? The 120, again, higher income. But both of those categories, you really don't see subsidies for those, because it just doesn't work at that scale. And so you see then on the right, the assumed affordability level for each, for each one of those types. The low income, that's the category that we don't need as many of, but that's the low rise up to three floors. But with subsidies, that could serve that zero to 50 as well. The mid-rise, which is that seven floors or five over two, can also serve the moderate income folks, households. It could also with subsidies and all the way up to 80%. So you've got a larger housing development and so it's more efficient. Therefore, with subsidies, you could provide a wide range of housing or income. And then high-rise, we're showing here that the high-rise could support the 120, the 80 to 120, the low income. So we're talking about maybe the luxury condominiums or the luxury apartments. So you can, because one thing about Everett is that there's not a lot of room for single-family homes. So I'm going to stop here and see if this makes sense, because when we go to do our analysis, we'll be matching up the capacity that we have in each one of those categories with the numbers that we need.
Commissioners, questions? Any need for clarification on those categories and how they match up?
I mean, it is just an exercise, because the market will drive a lot of things. But this is, Commerce gave us this guidance, you know, based on best practices and their analysis. And I believe there was a, may have been a committee that helped them come to these conclusions. So this is what we, we will be using to do our analysis, to make sure that we have adequate provisions. But that's not all, that's just the space. So reviewing the housing production trends and determining if their barrier exists. We have to gather information about those barriers. And I, Jennifer did a barriers, started a barriers analysis when she was working on the middle housing. So we've got a start to that, I'll kind of show you what that looks like. And then, so we'll have to identify what actions we need to take to overcome those barriers. They can be regulations, they could be a number of things. In fact, I will show you. So Commerce has given us a, here's an example of what barriers might be. I know you can't see that, but I think I gave you a link to that in your staff report, if you wanted to actually see what those. But there's a couple of pages of this matrix where we can go through and list the strategy. And then what is preventing us, or what's the barrier? Is it a development regulation? Is it a process that needs to be fixed? Is it limited land availability or environmental constraints? Or is it funding? And we know there'll be funding gaps for the lower income. It's, it's a problem everywhere. So any questions on this? I have questions.
And just a question to clarify, the link to that one is that that's under the section titled racially disparate impacts, where it says there, it looks like this is a link, it says full analysis. Is that the correct place to, to check for the link to that matrix?
And I'm wondering if I. Where did you say that went?
I'm looking at, right, right beneath the table, the single-family neighborhood residential, low-rise, mid-rise, high-rise table.
Okay.
That section says there's a template for a full analysis. Is that where we would find the barriers and strategies matrix?
Yeah, and I, I will make sure that I send a link out, because I, my report doesn't show the link, but.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Additional questions, commissioners?
I think we're almost, oh yeah. So again, just coming back to you, are these the right land use designations that we should be considering? It was something you talked about when you reviewed the alternatives. And then is there any other clarifications that we can provide to you?
And is there an opportunity for commissioners to kind of process this and consider what questions they might want to either maybe email in or bring to our meeting next week, or next month?
Yeah, definitely. And if you do think of some, just email them to Kathy, but don't email them to all the commissioners. But we will make sure all the commissioners get everybody's questions.
Okay.
Maybe have a question, or the beginnings of a question.
Okay.
So I'm trying to, I'm looking at the typologies and the assumed affordable level capacity analysis. So trying to process that, but I'm trying to figure out where like the missing middle would be. So it appears that it would be in the neighborhood residential.
Yes.
Which is where it would go, because I guess it would have to go there, right? But then it doesn't appear that it would be, that it's geared towards, or would be counting towards anything other than 80 to 120% or above 80. So are we not thinking that the missing middle will provide relief or provide benefit to below 80% at all?
That's a good question. It's, it certainly is possible. I think these are generalities. ADUs, they also categorized ADUs. I didn't put them on there, because I think that's something different, but. Yeah, could you, thank you. I got two microphones on here, so.
I, I think you know this, but maybe just to clarify that missing middle refers to the types of housing, not the income of the people that live there. So it doesn't have to do with middle income, for example. And, and generally, so I guess sort of how that provides relief is that if you make 80 to 120% AMI in Everett today, there's a lot of houses or apartments maybe that are affordable, that are affordable for those making 50 to 80%. And so like, that's great for you, because you make more than that and you can totally afford those units. And that limits the opportunities for those Everett residents that make 50 to 80, because they're kind of getting priced out by others who make more. So if there is greater supply that is provided in that kind of neighborhood residential type, which is the missing middle, you know, so. So it's that, you know, triplex or courtyard apartment, or maybe ADUs that are able to be either rented or ownership opportunities. That supply provides relief for the folks that might make 80 to 120, which also helps the supply for, for those that are making less. And it's also, you know, the other thing about it is, and it kind of speaks to maybe Kimber's work, is that, and to what Becky said about the generalities, something that's affordable when it's built, to somebody making 80% AMI in 20 or 30 years, I mean theoretically, although Chris might have a different answer. You know, the, the value might decline over time. So it becomes sort of affordable housing due to, due to sort of its age or, you know, things like that. So I don't know if that helps speak to your question a little bit.
Again, I'm not sure I have a full question, I just kind of, my thoughts on that. I guess one of the things is the ability for below 80 or below market to have equity. And so where in our system are we providing the opportunity for equity, other than just hoping we build market and then hoping people that rent move out, so people at the less can move into rentals?
Yeah, no, that's true. And that ownership is, you know, is a, ownership opportunities are a real priority, I know, in Everett. I don't know, some, maybe it's something that, it's probably not necessarily my job to follow up on this, but something to think about is just, you know, what's, what about a duplex or a triplex that could be affordable to someone, because they're able to have their rental income? So they get ownership, but they're able to, to rent a couple of units. Maybe that provides different opportunities than, you know, than what might have been on that same plot of land. If just as a single-family house without that, or even the ADU rental income too, so. But yeah, it's, yeah, it's complex, so.
And I, I don't disagree with your logic. I guess I was just, maybe it's reality, but I'm hoping that there somehow we're looking at that typology to provide for lower, lower income or lower abilities to get equity into those, for the, for the lower AMI.
There's, there are policy tools too. And so as we, as we look at the housing element policies, so community land trusts and some other things that are, the titles of which ours gave you my mind, but there are some policy tools that can help support ownership opportunities for folks who, you know, down payment assistance, things like that. So it might be that's part of the method that, to solve that issue.
And this really is just to calculate capacity. So the policies for the calculation portion, but the policies, as Jennifer said, can support those homeownership opportunities. The lower community land trust is what was coming up in my mind too, because that is a way for low-income folks to purchase and gain some equity and wealth.
So that would be kind of a more built-out definition of what Chris was referring to as naturally occurring affordable housing. Is that correct?
I don't know that I would call it naturally occurring. I think community land trust.
Well, no, no, not the equity building piece, but, but meeting the need of that lower bracket. As, as properties age.
Right.
They become natural, part of the naturally occurring affordable housing stock.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That was a great question.
Commissioner Ballard is good for those. Additional questions?
Okay, we're getting towards the end here, but we wanted to share with you, I think it was in the report as well, just how we use policies in the work that we do. So we could put policies in the plan, but it's really important that we can use them as well, and that we do use them. You know, it helps us when we're adopting regulations, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Provides some guidance on city programs and actions. Sometimes there are decisions that need to be made. And if there's not a lot to go with, we can look back at the comprehensive plan. One thing that, well, that bullet, there, the, there are some financial policies in the capital facility plan. So how we go about funding our capital facilities. And so we do go back and use those. And so I was, wanted you to see that, so as we bring forward updates and amendments to these policies, it's kind of a screening of why we want to do that. I'm not going to read all of this, but as you can see, the housing element is a pretty substantial element. It probably, other than transportation, has the most policies in there. And so we really are going to take a look and make sure we've, don't have, and I'll talk about how we're approaching that. But all of these are important subjects and we have some new ones. So we may come to you with a little bit of a different structure. So I think I included a copy of our policy review worksheet. So all our teams have these for reviewing the policies, goals and policies. We gave them some guiding principles, so we'll focus on, do we need this for implementation, or what do we need this for? If we can, we should reduce, so that it becomes a more functional document for us. Thinking about future advancements, the one that comes to mind is the self-driving vehicles. And just thinking about those as we think about 2044, and then of course, all of our other functional plans. And then on the review criteria, I think you probably had a chance to take a look at those, but I think I've talked about all that, those as we've gone through this presentation. So one thing that's new is for, I think it's HB 1220, that we have to report back to Commerce in five years on what we did, because we're setting, we're. to Commerce in five years on what we did, because we're setting, we're setting up for what we're going to do, 2024 to 2044, and we've gotta give them a status. So that will be, um, interesting. And so some of the, um, I wanted to list some of the implementation pieces that you'll see, we're gonna be seeing that capital facility financing plan, uh, the sub-area planning, we'd mentioned that the light rail stations, and there may be others that we identify as we move through the plan. There's the AFF, I have one too many F in there, uh, H, plans, and also the development regulations to implement these policies. So, our next steps are, you're gonna be starting to get some more statistical data, so you're gonna start to get some more detail around this work. Uh, we're gonna continue discussions with you, we hope to have an updated draft element sometime here in the fall, and we'll also be introducing along the way draft code amendments. Um, we tried to bundle them in a way that makes sense with the elements, um, and that will include middle housing, so I think that's gonna be a big piece of work, and I think the community's gonna have a lot to weigh in on, and we, we welcome participation. Okay, two more questions. Uh, are, are there any other appropriate housing topics that you think we need to discuss or need, you need to tell us? Uh, or any other additional information? And again, you can think about that and come back and let us know.
I think Commissioner Zalinski had a question.
Uh, just a couple of, uh, comments and suggestions. Uh, I like your matrix, and I think this is a good way of presenting how a policy review can go, and I assume that eventually, when, when this gets completed, there's gonna be a review outcome for each and every column, to show what's happening.
Yep.
So, I, but I think this is a good way to do it, it's, it's easy to understand, it's transparent, it's very good, so I think you're to be commended for this. One slight suggestion is that, um, you, you keep every column on a page, don't split a column between pages.
Did it do that?
It did do that.
Sometimes I just...
Which is a little bit of an inconvenience when you're dealing with big pages.
Yes.
Just a minor, minor suggestion.
Thank you for letting me know.
Uh, in terms of inputs.
Yeah.
Um, one thing I didn't see here, I'm sure you're gonna get it, and you should be explicit about what the outcome was, is the development community, because there may be a lot more to why we're not seeing more building in spite of all this price increase than what Chris's, you know, we can't compete with King County. I'm, I suspect there's a little bit more to that story, and it might be useful to find out what that is from the developers, here.
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion, and I know on our list of things to do is to make sure we're reaching out to the development community, I think the, um, housing incentives program work, where he did that big report, you know, uh, that starts to inform us on some of those issues. Yeah.
Yeah, very good. The, the other thing, and then I'll shut up and let the other commissioner speak, is when, uh, Chris was saying that there's, uh, something like 72% of people who work in Everett don't live in Everett. It would, I think it would be very instructive if there was a way to find out the answers to why. Um, I'm sure there's many reasons, you know, we all, probably all of us have bought a house in our day, and we know there's a lot of things that go into your housing decision, but if there are like three big main reasons why people who work here don't live here, that might be instructive to us in crafting a new housing element to address those reasons. Is it because, you know, probably the lowest 25% of workers, maybe they can't afford to live in Everett, but maybe there's another 25 or 30% who could afford to live in Everett, but they choose not to, and it'd be interesting to know why they choose not to. Could be just a personal household reason, or it could be something related to the way the city is developing, or, and that might be instructive to us, I think, in putting the plan together.
Oh, we'll see.
I don't know if there's any easy way to get that, maybe, if there's, like, one of our local community colleges here might do a nice research project for us, or something like that.
Well, we'll see.
That would be instructive to know, though, the answer to that, if there's any realistic way to get that information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ballard?
Not really a question, but I, you had mentioned way back, possibility of maybe workshopping at some point, or having an alternative meeting where it's, uh, more rounded, roundtable, and it certainly could be open to the public too, but, um, just maybe some definitions and when the stuff gets really dense, and...
Okay.
A little more processing and, and being able to brainstorm and things like that.
Yeah.
I think that would maybe be helpful.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Um, with regard to, uh, reaching out to the developer community, I think that is a really, really good point, um, but I think we should also remember that all developers aren't the same, there's, there can be a big difference in the focal point of different developers, so, uh, if, or when you do that, it would be helpful to know what responses are coming from what type of developer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Additional questions, or do we, this is, uh, a lot of stuff, I, I know, me personally, I am gonna wanna re-watch this and kind of marinate on it a little bit and, and think it through, so I think everybody's probably gonna wanna do that, and we can email in questions, uh, to Becky or to Kathy, it, was that your preference to Kathy?
Um, I think you can send to Kathy, Yorick and I, and then we will make sure the other commissioners see what you've asked.
Yeah.
As well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. Do we have anyone in the gallery who'd like to speak? Mr. Mohammed, please, uh, step up to the mic.
My name is Ishmael Mohammed, 3731 Colby. I'll give you this paper in a minute, I got my notes here. I wanna go back to Chris's presentation, and, uh, I want to commend the planning commission that he might be thinking that the land use, uh, codes that are the blockage for extra growth, but I think every planning commission, what I've been watching for the last five years, has done a tremendous job, you know, you look at metro housing, rethink zoning, and ADU ordinance, and a lot of things have gone through here. So I think a lot of work is being done, but there is a lot to do. Why is it that we don't get enough developers to come in and build more, you know? Commissioner Zalinski has, has this two times, three times. In the last COVID, you know, COVID time, we lost a lot of labor, so there is a big labor shortage, construction labor shortage, and the wages have gone up. Interest rates for construction is different than buying a home. So if I want to build a townhome, which I have a permit ready, but I can't build it, because the interest rate is like in the range of 10% for a construction loan. So if I build that, those seven townhomes on Rucker Avenue, I cannot do that, because it's not gonna pencil out, that's another thing. Another thing is permitting process, sometimes it takes a long time, and we, by the time we get the permits, it's probably too late, you know? Parking requirements, that's another thing that I would suggest, that when we look into the House Bill 1110, we did a good job on 1337 ADU, but when we come to the middle housing, I think, uh, parking requirements needs to be addressed there. How do we solve it? You know, middle housing is something that we are focused on right now. Middle housing, because it's not a single-family, it's not a multi-story, multi-high-rise, those gonna create some apartments. We have seen the studies, that condominiums are not visible above four stories are not visible, so we're gonna create more apartments at the o- one end, and single-family homes at the other. Middle housing will create more taxation results for us, as Chris said, and I agree with him, because I follow Chris quite regularly, and I will give you a case study for that, and you can look into that. I ha- I have a, I did complete a project right behind Ivers. If you see that, there is behind Ivers, there is a single-family home, and there is a duplex built right in the back of it, and then I condominiumized that into three parcels so that I can sell it. Now, when I had that one home, my yearly property tax was $3,000 a year. As soon as I condominiumized that duplex into three projects, three parcels, the property tax went up to nine thou- actually, 9,800 a year for the same property, which means I'm okay with that, because now there are three units, but as soon as I condominiumized the income for state and city went up, that's a clear, and I can show you those papers. Other thing we can do is, we can incentivize the developers, but not just give in, take some back too from them. If we give them two ADU units, ask them to build one and give it to a Section 8 person. Lot of cities have put these conditions, City of Seattle has a condition that one ADU, you build it, second one has to be energy efficient, or a lead, like, you know, environmentally friendly. We can, we, our requirement is on the 80% of the people who are below 80, 80% AMI, and they are ready to be subsidized, but they don't get housing. They don't get housing, because the 80 to 120% gets that. They come in and they grab that housing, either rental or anything. So for them, when we incentivize anything, we have to get something in back from that developer too. They're gonna do it, but get something in back. Uh, have some pre-approved ADU plans ready, get that in the works, and that will help create ownership units in our, in our community. We are talking 2044, we should be open for more different kind of housing, modular housing, prefabricated, 3D housing, tiny homes, lot of these can be looked into, because I wanted to, now I want to put, because there are two ADUs allowed, I want to put a tiny home in one, so that I can buy it from in Marysville, bring it in, put it in. But when I went to city, said no, you can only put those into, uh, RV housing community or something, like, you cannot put those, but we should be open to those ideas too, because we need housing, those things. Chris mentioned, look at people versus places, I may not agree to that. When we look at people, yes, we have a need, but it's not that we're gonna compromise the places. We will look at our design, we will look, we will keep the character, and within that, we can create a hybrid model. We look at the people also, and places also. That's all for today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Ayana, do we have anyone remotely who'd like to offer public comment?
No comments.
Okay, and with that, we have completed our agenda, and so we are adjourned. Thank you.